Good evening, everybody. We are about to start the December fourteenth Board of Education meeting. I wanted to remind everybody that during public session, if you are online, you must be in the remote learning link. And Mrs. Morish will then call upon you one at a time to speak during public session. If you are not going to speak during public session and you just want to watch the Board of Education meeting, you just need to click on the YouTube link. The YouTube link will have a clearer, sound quality than the link to participate. And that's just part of the technology issues. Remember, with public participation, you need to state your name, address, be a resident, employee, and you have three minutes to speak. If we have anybody in the audience, which currently we don't, but when we get to public participation, we would also call those people forward as well. And I just want to share that the state of Ohio, the legislation granted remote learning option to be able to be, I'm sorry, the remote learning, no, I'm still saying it wrong. The Board can virtually meet remotely through July one, 2021. It was supposed to end in December, but it's been extended. I apologize for stating that wrong. And at this point in time, we're coming back in from executive session. And I will, do you want me to read the reason or will you, Chris, read the reason for executive session?
Yes, would you?
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay, so we are coming back in at seven thirteen from executive session. The roll call, all five board members are present. We went into executive session at six P M. Executive session was for this meeting is, sorry, excuse me. Executive session was for the purpose to confer with the Board's attorney in order to prepare for negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. Just a slight information, both associations are up in 2021 to have their contracts negotiated and bargaining. And we are just starting that process at this point in time. And with that, I will send it over to President Otto with the approval of the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Thoreau. Do I have a recommendation, recommendation to approve the agenda as presented?
It is recommended that the Board approve the agenda as provided. Present.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Would you please call the roll?
Dr. Knight Abowitz?
Yes.
Dr. Mead?
Yes.
Dr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Dr. Roberts?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, for God and the visible. Thank you. The Butler Technology and Career Development School report, Mr. Mead.
Okay, I don't have very much today. I'm sure you're all aware that tomorrow's Butler Tech's board meeting, and usually it is a December dinner for all the board members from all the boards. But that, of course, is canceled. The only other more exciting thing on the agenda tomorrow night besides regular things is that Butler Tech is in the process of, beginning the process of construction of a new natural science building in Monroe where the Natural Science Center is. The first drawings are out and will be presented them tomorrow night. But I was looking at them and they look really very interesting, the vet place and the horse barn. And they're going to have solar panels and wind towers. So I hope to learn more about that tomorrow. It's very exciting for Butler Tech students to get this new facilities at Monroe. They're pretty crowded and outdated there. Other than that, Butler Tech is still on their hybrid model and plodding along like many other school districts.
Thank you, Mr. Mead. Legislative liaison report, Dr. Knight Abowitz.
The House and the Senate in Ohio are in their lame duck session, which is a short session at the end of the year. In this, in this lame duck session, they have very quickly passed two pieces of legislation. One is to expand Ed Choice, which is the voucher program, which provides tax funds for private schools in Ohio. And the second bill that they've passed allows local school boards to permit teachers to carry weapons in schools without taking the peace officer training, which had previously been required for adults who are not police officers to carry weapons in schools. What has not been passed through both houses is the Fair Funding Act. It was passed in the Ohio House by eighty-seven to nine vote during the last week in November. This is a bipartisan bill that I've talked about before, which fixes the funding formula in the state of Ohio, which was deemed unconstitutional in nineteen ninety-seven by the Ohio Supreme Court. The Ohio Senate leadership has decided they will not take up this bill before the December recess. Senate Finance Committee Chair Matt Dolan says they will take up the bill in the 2021 session. And so, in my view, the lame duck session did not yield anything very good for public schools at this time. I hope we can push our representatives to be more responsive to the needs of public schools in the next legislative session. This is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Knight Abowitz. Arts and Athletic Liaison Report, Dr. Howard.
Yes, thank you. I just briefly spoke with Wes Cole, who said that when the swim team has their first meet tomorrow, at that point, all winter sports will have become active and engaged in full participation. I also got an update today from Elise McWilliams. I've asked for input from our arts faculty. She reminded us of the grants that I think we had talked about earlier from the Oxford Community Foundation and Butler Rural. I remember last year, there was a, we talked about an art show that they participated in called Students Rebuild, which was an online event. They're going to participate in that again. That's not running yet, but they're in preparation for that. They're looking forward to the MLK Art Show in January. And they've been communicating with the Oxford Community Arts Center about doing a separate art show. We don't have a lot of information on that. So Kramer art, active, engaged, moving forward. I also got a report from Mike Marston talking about, he said, "We continue to work on scales, exercises, and pieces for eventual performance. Our goal is to stay in shape so that we're ready to go when things settle and we can get together in person." Maybe even more importantly, and I love that he said this, and I think this typifies our arts and athletics staff, faculty, and all of our faculty. Maybe even more importantly, we are maintaining relationships with students and among students. So continuing to build those, those connections and those relationships. So thank you to everybody involved with arts and athletics for keeping things going through these very challenging times.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. The Student Achievement Academic Liaison Report, Dr. Roberts.
I want to thank Director Gregg for giving me some information to share. For the past two months, I've been sharing a lot about our STEM program, which of course, we are all very proud of. But I wanted to share kind of where we're going now. So virtual field trips have been a positive way to get students involved in the outside world and in our community. So some grade four students took an Ohio adventure, virtual field trip, to learn about physical and human features and resources. Students virtually visited different locations around the area to look at field examples. Some second grade students had an opportunity to visit with a gecko while in the remote setting in order to learn more about animal habitats and characteristics of predators and prey. Some of our in-person third grade students shared in a writer's celebration day where they were able to connect with some of our remote learners to share, read, and comment on one another's writing. I think that's awesome. I am so excited to see that. TMS and THS, English Language, English Language Arts E L A teachers continue to work with the Ohio Writing Project to learn more about how to engage students both remotely and in person. These sessions take place on Wednesday P D times and have been a great way to collaborate, to take place between middle and high school teachers. And I remember several years, we've had a student or several students come and present to us. And it's always been exciting to hear their writing. And, and they are so proud to share that. So I hope we can do that as well. Math adoption is taking place. And Teaching and Learning Team has been meeting with grade level chairs and the math department in the middle and high school in order to narrow down the curriculums that are now available. Teacher and student input is being gathered over the next couple of months in order to make those decisions. TMS and THS are working both remotely and in person with students on Wednesdays. These sessions focus on helping students get organized as well as their academics, tutoring, and guidance on assignments. Elementary in-person students just took the MAP assessments. These assessments are diagnostic and they help teachers understand where students are at this point in their learning. Teachers will spend some time in early January looking at that data and narrowing down the areas to focus on for the students. TMS will be utilizing these assessments when they are back in mid-January. Members of Teaching and Learning worked with Ms. Case and the TMS choir on a virtual Holiday Road performance. I think this is awesome. Students recorded themselves. And then T N L member Josh Lawson is currently piecing over fifty videos together to create a virtual choir. I have to tell you, I, I can't wait to see that because I know our church choir talked about doing it. There was no way. We don't have anybody that's that savvy to be able to do it. Because what we tried really was not very successful. So I can't wait to hear that. This is just part of what good things are going on in this district for student success. So thank you, Director Gregg.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. At this time, we'd like to welcome visitors for the public participation section. And just as a reminder, we, in order to make sure things are fair, we allow three minutes for each person and that we limit this section to thirty minutes. Molly Morish, do we have anyone that's?
Let's give, we're going to have a thirty-second delay, well, not quite thirty-second delay, but it's going to be that way, okay?
We have one speaker ready, Amy Shannon.
Thank you, Amy Shannon, Alava and Heather Ridge Court. I wanted to thank the school board for, and the faculty and staff and all the teachers in the schools for all their hard work this semester. I know that this time for this semester and last has not been easy and there have been many challenging situations and decisions. I very much appreciate all those efforts, especially the teachers who are teaching remotely. I do want to ask that if the district is willing to consider it to have the communications about the district and about the individual schools, be fully inclusive of the remote families. I realize this is a serious challenge. There have been multiple times that things have been said, let's say, all students. And then when remote families reach out to find out more information, we're told, oh, that already happened and it was only in the building. So perhaps there can be a specific designation of all students in building or all students remote or all students for the school to, to help people feel included and not out of sight, out of mind. Again, my great thanks and appreciation for the incredible hard work that especially the teaching staff is doing, juggling all of this. And a special shout out to Mrs. Roach on her recent recognition and award. And the joy that she is bringing, the kids I see with my child who is at Kramer is palpable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matt Liggins.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Matt?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, Oxford resident, Talawanda teacher, T E A co-president. Earlier today, co-president David Anable and I sent an email to our district administration requesting Talawanda's school for all grade levels, preschool to twelfth grade, starting December sixteenth through seventeenth. And perhaps more importantly, return to in-person instruction after January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one at the earliest. The administration returned word that the district's committed to managing out the elementary semester face-to-face with the hope to preserve elementary face-to-face instruction upon a return after the first of the year. This is noble, but we wonder if it's wise. In the larger community of both Oxford and surrounding areas, the data from Butler County General Health District shows ongoing COVID spread and an increase in cases. Children may not be predominantly affected by COVID, but certainly may be carriers to more vulnerable people. And despite our best intentions, family will gather over break. We all know the gravity and fluidity of the pandemic. You don't have to go further than the district's on quarantine lists to determine the impact it's having across all grade levels and buildings. Many classes and staff members are stretched to the breaking point and teachers who were originally asked to teach only in-person learners have been forced into having to plan and perform their duties for both in-person and remote students without the benefit of the Wednesday time grant and secondary teachers to deal with the same issue. Secondary teachers have volunteered to help in-person elementary teachers so they can make sure they're reaching all their students. But that's been complicated by the sheer amount of quarantined staff and teachers and students. Long story short, we can't plan to help when we don't even know who's going to be there. The initial decision to return with face-to-face or remote choice was brought about by concerns over the academic and mental well-being of our students. And that's all well enough. We argue that staff, students, and parents have shown a remarkable resilience and flexibility to that end. But exposures after the day are likely to require quarantines that extend to and through Christmas. And a prudent family will be isolating a person in quarantine. So while we've been all this, all this courage from gathering already, a teacher or student in quarantine won't even be able to join their immediate family for holiday dinner or hug their immediate family on Christmas, which for a child in quarantine will likely be worse for their mental health than a few weeks of remote obstruction. Also, it's feasible and by current trends probable that beginning face-to-face instruction at the elementary level on January fourth, immediately after winter break, will make our current situation look rosy in comparison with a widely predicted upswing in positive cases and quarantines, even compared to our current high building percentages of quarantined staff and students. We make this request knowing it will not be popular in all corners of the community. It isn't unanimously, unanimously popular in our own union. But I believe it's the best choice for both the physical and mental health of our students and staff, and we can't be unconsciously silent. We understand the difficulties such an abrupt shift would entail. I mean, it's the week before Christmas break when people kind of want to go to school. It's even possible this request is too little, too late. But it's based on a transparent and objective reaction to the information we currently have at hand. And we saw a faith that our district's also committed to transparency and objectivity. Moving to remote instruction for the rest of this week and for two weeks following break allows Talawanda to do its part to reduce community spread of COVID and to help preserve the upcoming break for staff and students so they can relax, recharge, and be with their loved ones. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Becca Asher.
Yes, my name is Becca Asher. I live at two eight six one Minton Road in Hamilton. I can see the pandemic and the school closure from many different angles as I am the wife of a first responder who has worked through the entire pandemic. I am the mother of four children, three remain in Talawanda School District, a twenty-year healthcare worker, a patient with multiple autoimmune diseases and a neuromuscular disease, and a coronavirus survivor. Having said all of that, I am here to speak on behalf of my children. First, I want to thank you for keeping our elementary schools open so that my youngest daughter, who was once really struggling, is now thriving. My middle school-aged child wants to be a teacher and recently said this, "Put me back in elementary school. I cannot learn online." She is an excellent student, and to watch her yell and cry at her computer screen is really heartbreaking as a parent. Use my emotion, it is emotional for me. Next, I'd like to talk about the class of twenty twenty-five, which is this year's eighth grader. They missed all of last spring as seventh graders. They have gotten less than three weeks as eighth graders in person. And I recently heard one of my child's eighth grade teachers say to the class about them being ready for high school. And I thought to myself, how could they be ready for high school when they haven't had in-person instruction except for three weeks and won't have potentially? I guess that's up in the air at this point. I'm just very concerned. My, my children's grades are good, but how much do they really know? I'm wondering if there are plans for a remediation program, if those are in the works. I know that there are kids that are truly, truly struggling and even failing at this point. My sister lives in West Virginia, and the state school superintendent there has stated that he feels that remote learning will put students behind three to five years. This in combination with the mental health aspects are the reasons that I am choosing to speak tonight. I received a call from, from the high school about someone very close to me who dealt with mental health issues, and we were not even in a pandemic. Mental health is very serious, in my opinion, and it really concerns me going forward as we continue, if we continue to stay remote. It is my opinion that we should open just as soon as we possibly can. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Becca.
Do you have any other speakers this evening? Mr. Otto, I think this will conclude the public participation portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Morish. Dr. Cur, or excuse me, Shawna, report of the treasurer.
Yes, six A through D, I am recommending that we block six A through six D and that the Board approve the following as presented. Approval of the November sixteenth, two thousand twenty regular minutes, approval of the gifts, approval of the appropriation modifications, and approval of the then and nows over three thousand.
So do I have a motion to approve six A, B, C, and D? So moved. Thank you, Mr. Mead. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, who was the second? Okay.
Any discussion? I would like to thank the Faith Lutheran Church Campus Ministry, the St. Matthew Lutheran Church, and the Butler Rural Community Connection for their donations. Greatly appreciated. Any other comments? You can call the roll.
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Dr. Roberts?
Yes.
Dr. Knight Abowitz?
Dr. Howard? Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Next item, it is recommended that the Board approve the November financial report as presented.
Or do I have a motion to approve six E?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mead. Are there any questions? Would you please call the roll?
Dr. Howard?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Dr. Knight Abowitz?
Yes.
Dr. Otto?
Yes.
Passes. Next item, 6F. At this time, I will ask for volunteers to be the president pro term for the 2021 organizational meeting.
Usually, we have a, some of the earlier board members volunteer for this.
Yeah, Becky, it's been tradition that the newest elected board member who's gonna be at the meeting volunteers to be president pro temp for the organizational meeting.
Why are you looking at me, Pat?
Since you're newly elected and Ms. Abowitz won't make that meeting.
Is that what you said?
Yes.
I didn't really hear that.
I'm sorry.
I didn't hear it either.
Okay, I'll volunteer, sure.
Are there any other, any of one else interested in it? Very good, thank you. Do we need a motion? So do I have a motion to approve Dr. Howard as the president pro temp for our organizational meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Mead. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Knight Abowitz. Any discussion? Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Dr. Knight Abowitz?
Yes.
Dr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Dr. Roberts?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Dr. Howard.
Thank you all for your confidence.
I just have a couple of items for information. This is 6G. First item that I have is that I wanted to just tell everyone that the county auditor, Roger Reynolds, is refunding money from their real estate assessment fund to all the county local governments, returning $3.4 million within the county and Talawanda's portion is totaling $142,586. Second item is that we received word from our Southwest Ohio COG, which is the Council of Government, for our substitute teachers that we belong to, and they are going to absorb all unemployment charges that have been incurred through December 1st. This decision will save Talawanda a minimum of $25,000 and upwards of $50,000, so we want to thank them. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Tofowski. Report of the superintendent, Dr. Thoreau.
I would like to block 7A, the approval of the certified licensed personnel, 7B, approval of the classified personnel, and 7C, approval of the supplemental personnel for the board to approve, please.
Do I have a motion to approve 7A, B, and C?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. Are there any questions? Would you please call the roll?
Dr. Roberts?
Yes.
Dr. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Knight Abowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Motion passes.
It is recommended that the board approve the second reading, the policies that were presented for the first reading at the November 16th, 2020 Board of Education meeting, and that had to do with cost principles, spending federal funds and procurement, federal grants and funds, and we have Mr. Malone here too if we have any additional questions or concerns.
So do I have a motion to approve 7D?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Mead. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Knight Abowitz. Are there any questions? Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Dr. Knight Abowitz?
Yes.
Dr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Dr. Roberts?
Yes.
Passes.
For my informational items, I wanted to let the public know that we are still struggling with filling positions and substitutes. So we're going to do another open interview and that will be on January 5th, starting at 9:00 a.m. and you will go to the Nelson Morrow Building, which is right behind SDS. So we will accept people to walk in. If you have a resume, you're welcome to bring it. We're looking for educational assistants, subs, food services, recess coverage, all types of positions, and it goes from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And I want to give a shout out and a thank you for all of our staff that are continuing to provide meals to all of our children who come and ask for it. But next week, even though we are out of school, so next Monday, we will be preparing meals that we will be able to give to any student, any child, and it will have seven days worth of breakfasts and lunches. So please come and get the meals. We're gonna make the meals. We don't want to waste them and we want people to come and get the meals while we are on holiday break. And that is my informational items.
I have a question for you, Dr. Thoreau. This is in response to what's going through my mind after listening to Mr. Lykins. I realize I'm kind of confused about exactly who's attending when and how. So elementaries are going through this week and remote learning for middle and high school is through this week. Then everybody's done for how long?
Okay, so let me clarify a little bit so you're not white there. So at the elementary level, there is in-person learning, which is going through this week, and then about 20% of our students are doing remote learning, so 80% are in session. Grades 6 through 12 this week is 100% remote learning. On Wednesdays, we are doing interventions and bringing in some students to work with our students. We are also, at the high school level, going to be providing additional opportunities, learning opportunities for those students who are not doing well, who are failing, kind of what we do in our summer school. Mr. Davy is running that program and he is reaching out to individuals. Then on January, I think it's 4th, let me look it up.
Monday.
Yep, January 4th, Monday. Elementary students would return based upon what choices that they made. Remember, we sent out that decision maker, so it will change a little bit. So at the elementary level, and we're still around an 80-20 split, so 20%, about 20% of the students would be starting on the 4th remotely and 80% would be starting face-to-face or in-person instruction. Grades 6 through 12 will stay remote from January 4th all the way through the 18th. The 18th is a holiday, there's no school because that's Martin Luther King Day, so that's a Monday. Grades 6 through 12 will then change on January 19th. And again, it's about an 80-20 split. 80% of the students will return to in-person learning and about 20% will remain through remote online learning.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Did that help you?
Yes.
I just want to make sure I was clear because I know some people, it's gonna change in January because we're going into second semester.
Right, right. Thank you. Yeah, I was not clear on that whole schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thoreau. Items from the board members.
I do have something. One short item here, I was, I had the great pleasure and privilege last Tuesday to stop in at the TOPPS, the Talawanda Oxford Pantry and Social Services, where I was chatting with and observing Jenny George, who's the intervention specialist in charge of the Class 23 program. She was there with Audra Drake, occupational therapist, and with two of the students in that program, Cameron and Matthew, and they were working in the pantry, they were sorting cans, they were breaking down boxes. And I just wanted to mention that we had talked last spring about the beginning of this Class 23 program, but we really haven't had an update on it and I was really impressed with what I saw. I asked Jenny to please send me a little bit of information and I just want to kind of update everybody that Class 23 is a transition program that serves students with disabilities between the ages of 18 and 22. The program focuses on employability, life and leisure skills while accessing our community. Right now, there are five students enrolled in the program with the possibility of two additional students next year. The staff members for this are Jenny George, the intervention specialist, Kathy Mabus, the job coach, Audra Drake, occupational therapist, and Adrian Mann, speech therapist. Currently, they are taking these students to work sites, including the city building for the city of Oxford, TOPPS, the food pantry, Hillside Therapy Farm, Oxford Donut Shop, and Oxford Parks and Recreation. She explains that this year, students have worked two to four hours at the above work sites on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. They've experienced leisure activities in the community, such as basketball, walking the new trails, cornhole, using the new teen center at the tri-building called the attic, and scootering. They've visited Kroger, the Dollar Tree, TJ Maxx, and Walmart to practice purchasing skills and they still see each other face-to-face in person during remote learning if parents can provide transport. So just a shout out to Jenny George and that team doing amazing work with these young adults. So thank you to them for their efforts.
Anyone else?
I would just like to say that I wish everyone peace, love, hope, and safety as we move into 2021 and thank you for being so dedicated to our students.
And I would like to again thank Dr. Thoreau and all the staff. The amount of flexibility needed to get through this year is off the charts and I think tonight when we approved a couple, you know, positions and supplementals or extra things to help students on the high school level, bringing in students at the middle school and high school on Wednesdays to try to alleviate some of the difficulties they're having, it seems like there's so many different things that the staff is doing and trying to do the best they can to help the students through this time. Hopefully, this time will pass and that everybody over the winter break wears their mask, wash their hands, and do the things we need to do so that we can all get back, all of our students can get back in the school building as soon as possible because that's what we really need, the students really need it and we really want that. So please do what we need to do so we can get our students back. So thank you to the staff.
Recently, I read an article that talked about school districts across the country that are facing the problem of trying to remain open, but there's an insufficient number of substitutes to help keep these schools open. So it's not just Talawanda that's facing that problem and that's really what's driving us having to close our schools. I'm like, Mr. Mead, would like to thank our staff for everything they've done to help keep the schools open. And I'd also say to Dr. Roberts, I think you're correct. I hope that we all have a wonderful, peaceful winter break and that we can recharge and come back ready to go. So with that, our next board meeting is going to be January 11th. That'll be our organizational meeting. And would anyone like to make a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Mead. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Dr. Roberts?
Yes.
Dr. Knight Abowitz?
Yes.
Dr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.